Number three, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Three point one additions. Three point one one approved 2023-2024 updated crisis management plan of action. Eleven point five. Do you have any information on that?
One of the things that we do annually is approve the crisis plan, and we have done a comprehensive and very thorough review of the plan. There were a few other edits that were needed, so that's why it wasn't presented in September, so we're forwarding it this evening for approval.
Can I get a motion to approve the crisis plan? Have we already?
You approved the agenda already.
So that's in it? Okay. Excuse me. Number four, public forum.
None.
Number five, presentation. Five point one, FFA National Convention. Natalie Resch.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Natalie Resch. I am the FFA advisor here in Pipestone. We have a group of people that have, a team, that have earned a trip to attend the National FFA Convention. So they won in April of last year at the Minnesota State Convention in Meets Evaluation Contest. And we also have a student that earned their American degree that will be attending National FFA Convention as well. What I'm asking for commission, we'll be able to take these kids on an overnight trip. We'll be leaving Tuesday, October 31st at 6:00 a.m., and we're planning to be back Saturday, November 4th sometime in the afternoon, pending on driving and traffic. It's about a fourteen or sixteen hour trip, I believe, to get from Indianapolis to my stuff where our convention is being held. So while the kids are gone, I have a team, five, four students in high school and one college student going to get their American degree. So I have three sophomores and one junior that will be attending for Meets Evaluation, so they will do some independent evaluations, and they will also do a team activity working together as well as getting a chance to visit the Purdue campus, which is where the contest is being held, in addition to going to some opening sessions and hearing some addresses from the national officers and the keynote speaker as well. So hopefully it should be a really good experience for the kids to go. In addition for the trip, I am also asking for $1,750 to cover the transportation of the team in a school suburban, and my substitute for being gone Tuesday through Friday of that week as well. We do have a partnership with the Egg Chamber Committee, which comes out of the Pipestone Chamber of Commerce, which is funded by the Puffa Ribbon Action at the counter fair. They have twenty percent of the ribbon action funds that are available for students that are in earning a national trip that related to lifestyle, which Meets Evaluation is. They give $2,000 to individuals and teams that are going, so that cuts our $4,000 cost down significantly and makes it much more affordable for the school and for FFA to take these kids on the trip. So we really do thank them for their funding, donation, support as well. Are there any questions for me?
I don't think so. Because we're taking action later, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Number six, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda before we vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes.
And as we do that, I just want to say a public thank you to Cody Hydebrink for stepping in this last month and putting forward the effort that he has. He has just done an incredible job. So if you get a chance to see Cody, just join me in thanking him for stepping in as he did, because he did a great job helping us through.
Seven, financials. Seven point one, review of budget year-to-date. Jackie?
This is the first budget year-to-date for fiscal year '24. It looks fine. Usually in January, I'll go through and reevaluate everything, like the revenue side, and do it a budget amendment if it's required, but it looks fine.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, I don't think so. Anybody got any questions? Okay, moving on. Seven point two, approved treasurer's report for August 2023.
Okay, the cash balance at the current time is $8.9 million. Last year was also $8.9 million.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for August 2023?
So moved.
You got a question?
I have one question on that. There was a big bill to Stan Houston Equipment. Is that for?
That's not what we're doing.
Oh, that's the next one. I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Seven point three, approve regular bills for September. This would be your question.
My question was, was the Stan Houston one, is that for students or is that for?
What page is it on? I need to know page number. I need to know an account number.
Bear with me then.
I will do that. I'm trying to find it too. I gotta make it bigger so I can see it.
That's what I'm trying to do too.
I can't find it. Move.
Mine's froze too.
I cannot get it to go.
Shoot, just lost everything.
So three hundred, three hundred, three, six, one, one, seven, three, Jackie.
That's coming through. Yes, sir. What's the dollar amount? It could be right air handling.
Like seven grand, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was over seven thousand. That's why I was questioning.
Do you know what page that is on?
Um, I gotta read some.
Oh, mine's frozen too.
Yeah, mine's, mine's covered up. It looks like age forty-one, a forty-two. Don't tell my wife. She says I can't find a thing.
Houston Equipment, all sorts of things. For the seven thousand?
Mm-hmm.
That, I don't know what that's for. That is for the new class, help me out with this, at Minnesota West. For them in construction or construction. I don't.
It's a geometry.
Geometry and construction.
In construction, yes.
This year. And it's going very well, actually, but that's what a lot of us.
That's what all that is for.
It was equipment that they didn't have for the.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is that stuff we buy, or where does that end up then?
This stuff.
Is that school district property or?
School district property. When we purchase it, it's school district property.
I guess my question is, is why don't we buy that stuff local?
I can't answer that.
I don't, I'm.
I don't have an answer to that either.
I have absolutely no idea who purchases it.
I think this was in process bef, for a while. I.
I guess it's a large dollar amount. I'd rather support our community with supplies and stuff like that.
Completely.
I don't know who filled out the requisition, and I don't know what the situation would have been. Maybe they couldn't get some of this. I don't.
I don't.
Yeah, no, I don't know. That's a good question. Yeah, it's just something I guess I would encourage to keep it local as much as we can. Community supports all of us, so that's.
Absolutely.
That's my one question.
I had a question about the tennis courts. Is that something that's on a, on the maintenance schedule?
It is, and it's, and I remember this conversation a few months back. We learned that after we built the new courts, because the surface started cracking.
Yeah.
And so, and so Kevin had Rick contact the coach in St. James. I guess they're big tennis program, and it is. It's in every, like, five to seven years.
Okay.
That you have to.
And so that's just our normal.
It's gonna be a normal, yeah.
That's what I wondered, too.
Yeah. It's just something that.
Right, just like the track or whatever.
Or like when we do the, the gymnasium floors.
Yep. Okay.
What's that?
Are there any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the regular bills for September?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Seven point four, approve high school activity bills for September. Are there any questions on the high school activity bills? Can I get a motion to approve the high school activity bills for September?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Seven point five, approve 2023 A Bonds for Additional Bond Money Treasurers Report for August.
So this is the first month in this fifty, three thousand dollars was a good faith deposit by the bank to purchase the bonds. So this is August. We received the remainder of it on September twentieth, two point eight million dollars. So that won't show up in here, because this is August. We received the rest of it September twentieth.
Okay.
So you'll start getting that again, and once we start the construction, it'll be just like how the elementary building was handled, and I'll do a budget year-to-date for the elementary building bond in coordination with Ralph Anderson.
Perfect. Can I get a motion to approve the 2020, 20, 2023 A Bonds for Additional Bond Money Treasurers Report for August?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, board forum information. Eight point one, board reports and updates. Anybody got anything? Has there been any committee meetings or negotiations we've had?
Negotiations had a committee, yeah.
Just a lot of changes coming. I mean, Clint could probably go into more detail, but a lot of the language, just a, a lot of changes.
Yeah, there's a number of things that were part of the legislative session that are coming forward. Some inclusion of early childhood staff into the, into the master agreement. That's a change. There's some changes that are going to be brought forward in language related to some leave things as well. So we're gonna work, MSBA has been delivering some sample language, and obviously that's what we'll move forward to when we get to the negotiations process. And then communication with staff about negotiations. I think they're, they're at a point where we're close to starting, wanting to start, so I think that'll happen in the next few weeks that we'll get initiating the negotiation process.
Is that the only committee meeting we've had?
That's the only committee meeting we've had.
I would just like to say thank you and recognize the people or the staff that came forward, like Cody, and some of the people that are doing the math classes, and some of those classes that we didn't have teachers for, we needed fill. That's great that everyone just kind of came together and said, hey, we'll take care of this. You know, that's great.
We have those six assignments.
Yeah, it takes a lot. I mean, it's extra work for them, and it's, it's great that we could do that.
No, not gonna stop. Can't put me anywhere.
Yeah, I guess I would like to, just visiting with different community members and stuff, I would like to give a huge thank you to Clint, Jennifer, Todd, to get this new school year started. I know it's a lot of changes. I think it's, you guys have done awesome.
Yep.
I hear nothing but positive feedback, so great job.
Be awesome.
Thank you.
And I've heard a lot of people that really like the flag allegiance, because being said real. I've heard that from numerous people. Yeah. I've heard, I mean, I've heard, no one's ever said they, they've all been like, I'm glad you guys brought that back into our schools. I mean, it was good.
Anything else? Okay, number nine, administrators' report. Nine point one, superintendent's board report.
All right, there's just a few things I'll highlight, and then there are a couple of attachments that I'll direct your attention to as well this evening. First of all, the social study standards. There's going to be a public comment period open for individuals to review, so we can certainly put that link on our district website. So if people are interested in, in putting forward some public comment on the proposed social study standards, that's open until October 25th of '23. So again, just an opportunity to weigh in. I have not looked at them in depth, but we will have a link there, a link there as well, so individuals can take a look at that. We're excited to welcome Christine Groenhoff to our team. She's going to be our new Director of Buildings and Grounds. Super excited. She comes with a number of years of experience, and both Todd and Jennifer were part of the interview process with me, and she not only brings experience but a great positive attitude, and I'm really looking forward to it. Her first day will be the ninth of October, so that's going to be in just a couple of weeks. She'll be joining our team, and again, just really excited about that. We have a, a meet and confer meeting that's going to be occurring with the Education Association. For those of you that aren't familiar, meet and confer is a process that's statutorily driven. We'll sit down with our teachers. There are just a couple of concerns that they want to discuss, items that fall outside the negotiations process, outside the master agreement, but it is just as it states. You meet, and you confer, you discuss it, and you come up with a solution going forward. So you're gonna work through that process. So that's coming up actually Wednesday of this week. And I, as you know, I had shared that we're doing some entry plan work. A survey's gone out to staff. I'm hoping to button up the staff this week, so if staff members haven't filled it out, encouraging them to finalize that, and then I'll put that all into a report that'll be summative to share with the board sometime in October, and try to incorporate. I know there's been some questions about the survey that was done last year. Look to incorporate that in as much as the feedback that I've had from staff and from board members that I've met with, so that'll be good. And then, one of the things that I'm excited to report on, it's going to happen later on this evening, the agreement with TSP. That's been a lengthy process, but TSP's been a great partner. That contract has been completely vetted through our, through our district legal counsel to make certain that everything is in order as it should be. It's a, it's an interesting dynamic whenever you have a construction manager as well to make certain that the language aligns with each other. So our legal counsel has fully vetted that and bring forward that with full recommendation later on. And then I just wanted to address, I know there've been some questions about the charter bus utilization, and I've met with Rick a few times on this, and we've really dialed this in. We know our budget last year was approximately $45,000 for transportation, and we're doing everything that we can to stay within that budget, if not lower than. And a lot of that is driven then by the fact that we're going to allow most athletics to use coach buses if available for the two longest trips, and then possibly at section time, and then if a team makes its estate, obviously, that's when they, they would utilize the, the charter buses. Otherwise, we're intending to utilize the yellow school buses, because we know from a cost perspective, it's, it's more cost-effective for us to do that. The other part of that that I'll share, we have communicated with, and I know Rick has done this, with the different coaches about the utilization of charters, and we do expect we're going to have some booster organizations that may say, well, if the district's covering the yellow bus, we'll cover the difference to pay for a, for a charter. So that, that may very well happen. And that's, that's outside of the, the district. It's just a, a bus upgrade that they'll pay for. So we should see less utilization of the charters, and again, that's driven predominantly by the, the economics of it when you look at the new agreement that we have with Ludoff. So.
It's all across all sports.
Yes, yep. And, and that's what Rick and I have talked about on, on a number of occasions, so.
So the two longest trips, sections, and state is.
Correct.
Where does the band fit in there and all the others?
The band has had, had their own transportation budget for a number of years, and that would be considered a bit of a separate, yeah, their own, yeah.
No, just a qualification.
Yeah, exactly. That's a good question.
Why they get to use it and not us.
Just so everybody's clear, I mean, when we negotiated with Ludoff, that was one that, that they really wanted to raise that rate. And, you know, we, we were very transparent during negotiations that the amount that it went up, that it was gonna be hard for us to justify the amount of use that we're using of it, and so, and they were okay with it. So it's, but it's, it's, it's very, very costly compared to a yellow bus. Don't quote me, but I think it's, like, three times?
I believe at least twice.
All situations, you could run two yellow buses.
You could secure two yellow buses for the cost of one charter. So those were some of the things I wanted to highlight. And then attached, you'll see a report on our student enrollment. For the most part, holding at where we anticipated in terms of the budget and what we budgeted. You'll notice that there's a, the September report, and then our Mars data there, October Mars, going back to 2005, 2006. You can see where that was, 1217, and you can see where our current enrollment is. That's not a Mars count. There's little difference between the two, but 1093. So again, we're not too far off of where we originally budgeted. And Jackie, I see her nodding yes, that that's something.
That's correct, yeah.
Yep, she, she works really hard to make certain that we're, we're in line. And then the other attachment that you see, and it's a bit older news, but it's still worth mentioning, and I know both the principals were, are going to just mention briefly some things about this. You'll see that we have our MCA data, our Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment data attached, and we addressed this with our staff right away the following Monday, when the news was in the newspapers talking about our results. And while we know that our assessment results are important, they're not the most important. There's a lot of other things that we take into account when we measure effectiveness of our schools and our classrooms. But you'll notice that we do have some work to do. We had a data, a dive with our entire teams, our teams from each of the buildings as we started in August. And then I know the principals are working with their leadership teams, talking through some different things on some strategies that we're implementing, some practices that we're improving. Some of it is a function of schedule. Some of it is a function of staff development with the letters training that we're doing. I don't want to steal any of their thunder. I know they're going to talk about those things a little bit as well. But again, we do take the assessment results seriously, but we also know, like I said before, there are other ways that we measure things that impact our learners. And I think about, for example, our kids going on the FFA trip. No, well, that show up on a Minnesota Comprehensive Examination anywhere, but I think it's a hallmark of success nonetheless. So those are things that I wanted to mention tonight and would answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Clint?
I had a couple of staff members that thought that it was very good that you guys did that meeting. They were a little scared at first, because it was a major meeting on a Monday.
On a Monday morning?
Yeah, they were like, okay. But I, the two people that, they said that they thought you guys did a really good job of just explaining the data and, you know, putting it out there so that everybody knew what was going on.
Good.
Being scared at first.
Note to self.
So when, when that data was originally presented, if I remember right, that presenter was, had mentioned that there's, there's ways to dive deeper into that data as well. Look through their software. Is that correct?
You can do by grade level or.
You can start doing item analysis to determine, to determine when a standard is taught relative to when it's assessed. And there's, there's a lot of work that can go into that, yeah. Yep.
So you guys are, are diving into that, is kind of what I'm hearing then. Fantastic.
We're making sure, for the middle school and high school, what we're making sure is, if we look, we're gonna start with a test that a teacher gives, and go question by question. Where was question one? First of all, where does it meet the Minnesota standards? If it doesn't, it's gone. Number two, when was that question taught? Now, let's go back through our lesson plan. When was that taught? How was it explicitly taught? What strategies were used? What strategies were given to the students? And if you can't correlate it, it doesn't need to be on the test, because there's also questions on tests that don't need to be there, unnecessary questions. So if you get rid of those, we're, we're not looking to test our kids today. We're just making sure that they know what they need to know. And so that's just some of the end-up stuff we have to do. And that's the process that we're making.
Any other questions? Moving on to nine point two, Principal's Board Report.
Good evening. Good evening. I think we've had an awesome start to the school year. I have a great team of teachers in place that are focused on the student success and the whole, just the whole overall wellbeing of our students. Our current enrollment, I know Dr. Willard touched on it just a little bit, but at the elementary, we have 608 students. That's pre-K through fifth grade. That includes the 12 students who are at the Colony. We kicked off the school year with open house. That was awesome. I received a lot of positive feedback from parents as they stopped me in the hallway. They loved how it went. It was very just smooth operating. One of the parts that we had changed this past school year for open house was moving our pictures to the school day, and I think that worked out really well. Parents didn't have another stop to do or wait in line. I had three photographers come in, and it happened right in the school day, and it went pretty efficiently. I had back-to-school assemblies with all of my students in their flex areas, just kind of setting expectations for the school year. That went well. On our playground, you're gonna see a buddy bench. That's a new addition to our, our playground, which I'm excited about. Last year, Lisa Pease's class invited me in to watch a video about a buddy bench, and they were all excited and wanted one. And I said, well, if you want one, write me a letter. So each one of the students wrote me letters stating why they wanted to have the buddy bench, and I read the letters, and I thought, you know, this will be a great addition. So we have that, and I know it's utilized by many students. A focus that I wanted, so one of my goals here was to really look at our writing standards and what our writing standards are, and how we can really kind of bring writing into the classroom. So I am doing published books with my students and with my teachers. All grade levels are going to do it. In preschool, kindergarten, junior kindergarten, and first grade, they have a class book that they're going to make. And then in students in second grade through fifth grade, they're gonna make their individual books. And they create these books. They get sent off. They get published. And so in May, we're going to have a Young Authors Night, where students can showcase the books that they have been writing. We just finished up fast testing this past week. We'll be looking at that and kind of really diving into that in this next coming weeks. I have three kind of big leadership or big groups that I have within the elementary. So I have my leadership, my literacy team, and they're really just focusing on literacy. Today, we kind of met with Megan Smith through Lexia, and just doing some focus on letters. We also kind of were gonna be looking at fast data and diving into that in terms of the literacy, and then just looking at our literacy plan and how we can implement and change that. Another team that I have is the PBIS. They are ready to go. We have a PBIS refresher course for all of our teachers tomorrow after school. And then my leadership team, they're, one of my goals for this year is just making sure that we have a strong tier one. And so my leadership team is gonna kind of focus on that and where we can go with that. The Booster Club had a back-to-school bash this past Wednesday at Westview Park. That was great, huge success. Homecoming is this week. Students are dressing up. We have sports. Trying to decide if I should show it or not. The parade, we're really excited that the parade is coming back. Pep Fest, and then the homecoming court we'll be walking through on Wednesday. So that's kind of elementary in a nutshell.
Any questions for Jen? Moving on to Todd.
Yes, sir. Okay, our enrollment, we are plus minus 609 students. So I'll give or take a kid or two. Ours is changing daily. Homecoming, which obviously is this week, I'm doing the mix of the middle school, high school for dress-up days. So middle school was city versus country, so I just forgot my cowboy hat. Let's see, tomorrow is America, America Day. Get rid of the A. It's just America. So. So, we'll be dressing as that tomorrow. Wednesday is color day, every class has a color, staff's color is green. Thursday, oh yeah, I expect all y'all to be here, we're having Barbie and Ken Day. So, I want to see, right there. Okay, so, and then on Friday, obviously, there is staff, or, excuse me, we're having our parade, and that's the big day. So far for the parade numbers, we have nine from the public, six, possibly seven floats right now from inside the school, but we're expecting more, even though it's after the deadline, such as senior floats. Seniors haven't submitted a design to be approved or anything like that, other class floats, football, et cetera, but I am very happy to hear we have floats from robotics, FFA, tennis, volleyball, so that is awesome.
I'm having a float.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. So we're also having a pep fest, the community is invited, we were initially going to do it back by the softball fields, but there were some concerns back there in the grass, so we moved it into the large gym is where it's going to be. They're going to, and there was a slight concern from me about moving it into the gym with safety and security issues, because there's no way to check everybody who comes in. So, it's not any different than, I guess, when there's a basketball game and people come into the school, except for there's class in session. And so we will have a pep fest, that will be very good, it'll be a whole school pep fest, the community is of course invited, we encourage them to do so. Then, as Jennifer said, Wednesday, they'll be walking through the elementary area, the band is going to be a part of that, the court is going to be a part, we're going to try to have a few football players, a few volleyball players, but that's it, because we don't want like a whole line going through elementary. Fast testing is done, with the exception of just a few students due to absences, late enrollment. The library will be closed on Tuesday mornings, with the exception of one, except for, with the exception of one Tuesday per month, due to the librarian being on to the county commissioners' meetings, but we have that settled, we've read it over the announcements, and kids who have PSEO or they're coming here to study, we're going to take very good care of them. They'll be either out in the large commons, or they'll be back in the counselor's area where they have a table. And it's turned out to be a blessing as well, having our librarian, Lori Gannick, on the commissioner meetings, because she's found ways to get us some money, so I'm not going to complain about that. We also have a new club, we have the chess club at school, which is great, and I've reached out to the other area high schools to see if they have chess clubs, so we could do like competition, see if they'd want to compete, none of them. So, that was disappointing. Visited Minnesota West today, I was very impressed, I had a meeting out there, they brought me through all the CE type of classes, I got to visit them, the classrooms that they have, like, we currently have, we're renting FFA space out there for welding, they currently have nine welders out there, but our kids start on stick, which is what we have, and they have those out there. And we also have, just in case y'all didn't know, a couple thousand dollars worth of steel, that's ours, that's laying out there as well. They have a lot to offer, and I feel that our school is under utilizing Minnesota West because it's here in Pipestone, and compared to other schools, we have some of the lowest enrollment. So, I will be meeting and figuring that out. On a very positive note, we have two National Merit Scholarship students this year. The last time we had a National Merit Scholar was 2004, and this year we have two. So that is fantastic. They were presented with their certificates this afternoon by Dr. Willert and I, I believe Deb put something on...
They'll be on at 7:00.
They'll be on at 7:00, there, well, there you go. We are currently working on all issues related to the recent fire marshal visit, so we're working on those in the middle and high school. We're also working on attendance, absences, whether unexcused or excused. There's a lot of codes in there that aren't necessary and are quote-unquote like forcing students and their parents to try to hide where they're going, when we're just like, if you go to a doctor, bring a note back. So, if they deem it, it's like, well, I have a haircut. So, then we're playing judge of, is that excused? Is that not excused? Is it? So I'm trying to move it to more streamlined in a process of, okay, you have an appointment? Great. If it's at a doctor, bring us back a note, and it'll be like you, you'd never left, and leave it at that. So that's what I'm working on. Substitutes, it's very difficult finding and keeping subs, we have great difficulty. My dean of students subs in classes a lot when he's needed other places. Today, both the counselors were out subbing in classes, it's just a difficulty. We met with the, I've met with my PBRS team and my middle school site improvement team twice, same thing goes for the high school site improvement team. As I said, we were working on item analysis with some of the testing results. Okay, my Achilles heel here, the student IDs. Yeah, that hasn't gone out like it was supposed to, dealing with a lifetime, trying to get all of those printed. I told Josh, they will be out on Monday, so, and we, he said, we can pass out the high school right now if you want. I said, no, we're going to do it all in the same day. And so that will be on Monday. Also, though, dress code, since we've really gotten down to bare bones here, this is, this is what it is, I have seen a great improvement. Staff members have told me they've seen a great improvement. Kids will come down the hall in the morning with hats on, and they'll see you, and they'll just take those off early because they know. So, it's, it's come along very well with that, on that one.
Any questions for Todd?
He did mention the fire marshal, and yeah, we did have a few items that both Jennifer and Todd are working through, and then obviously, we have Cody as part of our team working through those as well. Nothing, I thought, that was too terribly alarming, most things have a 30-day window. There were a couple of things on there that we had one day to take care of, we had a glade plugin that he found, the guy has good eyes, and the other one was...
The other one that we had one day was...
Was that gas?
Oh, a gas valve in a, in a science lab was partially turned on, not the main, but the, at the table.
Where a kid can turn it on.
Yeah, where a kid was...
It was partially turned on, but it was turned off.
Yeah, so, so we're working through those things, but anticipate there shouldn't be any issue. We had the, Aaron from the Service Cooperative was in today, and he was looking at the report with us as well, and taking note of the things that they can help us with too, so, be in good shape. Thanks for bringing that up, Todd.
Okay, moving on, number 10, discussion items look like none. 11, board action, 11.1, FFA national convention request. Can I get a motion? As well, is there any discussion?
I move that the district pays the $1,750 that they are still in need of, and that we approve the trip.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Good luck.
Yes.
Exciting.
11.2, resolution accepting donations to the district and high school activities. I'd like to recognize United Women in Faith for $235 to Elementary Help Fund, Aero Athletic Booster Club, $6,652.72 that went to the acceleration program, Dr. Dish Basketball, two score flashers for gymnastics, hotel rooms for the 9th grade wrestling, and weight room equipment, and also Pipestone Publishing for $1,345 for Athletic Help Fund from the Fall Posters. Can I get a motion accepting the donations to the district and high school activities?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11.3, approve agreement with TSP Incorporated. Clint already discussed, does anybody have any questions? This would be the architectural work and such for the projects we have this next summer. Can I get a motion to approve the agreement with TSP?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11.4, certified proposed levy limitation and certification report for the 2023 payable 2024. Set the truth and taxation meeting December 18, 2023 at 7:00 p.m.
I'll let Jackie share all the details necessary, but we both attended the levy workshop, I'll do the quick setup here, and the state has been very dynamic in the information that they've been giving us, there hasn't been anything locked down quite yet, so I'll let Jackie talk about that a little bit more, but again, we did go to the levy workshop, and with that date and time, that's something that is a hard and fast, once we establish that, the truth and taxation meeting shall start at 7:00 p.m., so anyhow, Jackie, I'll let you go ahead with the levy discussion.
If you look in your packet and you have this top sheet, I think I've done this every year, except for the new board members, this was in your packet, where it just compares the levy this year to the levy from last year, and any differences? And then it also has all the page numbers there, if you want to take that 45-page document home and look at it, you can do that, if you would like. So as Dr. Willert was saying, we went to Marshall for the training, okay? At that time, our increase was 8.91 percent. I knew it was going to change, so I printed this one on on September 19, and then the increase was 9.94 percent. Then I printed one out today, and the increase was .75 percent, also with an email from the state saying, we are having issues, so it's okay. So, so to be quite honest, I really couldn't even tell you right now.
We at least know a range.
No, .75, I'm sorry. So usually at this meeting, what the school board would do is they would approve the maximum, and then at the truth and taxation meeting in December, then you approve a specific dollar amount. And by that time, the Department of Ed should...
Know what they're doing?
Have everything. Somebody did this one, they went, .75, it happened to the 8.8, then I had the email, and he said, he said, we're having problems, I was on the 21st, and he said, we'll let you know when we can, when we have it all fixed, while I didn't get an email today, so this is the best I have. And then if you approve the maximum, then any other changes they make, I don't have to go back in and certify it, it'll just be the maximum. Until December, then we'll approve the actual dollar amount.
And so the maximum, Jackie, is 9.94, correct?
Well, I wouldn't even say that.
Yeah, just preside in that maximum, yep.
Correct.
Yep. So what I'm, so what I need is, I need a motion for the maximum amount, approving the maximum amount, with the meeting date being December 18, 2023 at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
And I need to run back to my office, since, to certify to the state and print out a report that Katie will have to sign.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11.5, approve 2023-2024 updated crisis management plan of action.
I'll comment on this again, our team, we brought in members, representatives from both the elementary and the middle school, high school staff, and we had Officer Danks present at the table, and we did a thorough review of our, of our crisis management plan. We are continuing to adopt the ALIS model for how we respond to crises, and again, that's, that's a protocol then, that we in turn had all of our staff trained on, we did an ALIS training when we did our back-to-school workshop, and heaven forbid anything would happen, but we certainly are well-prepared, I would say, if indeed something did happen. One of the areas that we have some continued work to do is our reunification process, and that's going to be something we work on throughout the year, on how we really refine our reunification as we go forward. But again, the whole process is, really involves staff, and I really appreciated the feedback and the input that staff gave to ensure that we had a plan that's, that's functional, it's workable, and I know as we were going through the plan, you talk about what-if scenarios, and again, the relationship that we have with the police department to really ensure that we have a collaborative, shared response in case that we have a situation, made me feel really good. So, the plan's presented this evening with a recommendation for approval.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the 2023-2024 updated crisis management plan of action?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 12, adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. We're adjourned.